Hi, good afternoon. This is the Conservation Commission's special meeting Thursday, September 19th. Here in the Town Hall Boardroom. Meeting is available on Zoom as well. I don't think there's anyone waiting in Zoom land. Do a roll call.
John Fuzek here.
John Fuzek. And Zilia here, Ron Bates-Mason here. We have three. We have a quorum. Next minutes, we're going to delay the minutes until the July minutes for approval until October. Next, we have public comment. There's no one here and there's no one out in Zoom, so I'm assuming no public comment. So we want to do a quick overview of the, since the Conservation Commission has taken over the Bristow Bird Sanctuary from the Parks and Rec Department, we just wanted to do an overview. Unfortunately, Tiger Man, Director of Public Works couldn't make it here today. We just wanted to do a little discussion of the role of New Canaan Land Trust, who in October of 2023 were made an agreement with the town to be stewards with the Conservation Commission of the Bird Sanctuary. Our, the maintenance budget in the town budget for this budget cycle going forward is $10,000 light item in the Parks Department for the Bird Sanctuary. Had just had a very successful centennial celebration run by New Canaan Land Trust. A big thank you there. Also, we should say that the Friends of Bristow and the Conservation Commission helped with lunch for the Department of Public Works, the Highway Department, and for the Parks Department, lunch at Bristow, which was provided by Walter Stewart's Market. For all the work they've done, included some of the vendors as well. That went great. The Centennial, you probably saw, went, was fantastic. The weather was great. So now we just need to discuss Bristow going forward and the budget. Today, this morning, a boulder was brought in by Titan where a plaque will be going. Need to reach out into what plaque that is. The Cam Hutchins plaque is up. But any questions? You have, the Flexi Pav is all done. Everything was completed prior to the Centennial. So all the phases of Bristow has been completed. Any questions on Bristow?
My understanding is that the Conservation Commission is taking over the care of Bristow Park going forward. Is that correct?
Oh, that's been for, for, it was about three years ago that Parks Department relinquished oversight to the Conservation Commission. Yeah, so.
So now that the renovation is done, I'm curious what the annual upkeep or whether there are any other tasks related to the renovation that we should be discussing or putting on our, our budget.
So that's, that's the thing is, we can discuss more next month when Tiger's here, but we have $10,000 light item in the budget.
Okay.
Specifically for Bristow and the Parks Department budget.
Okay.
At the end of last budget cycle, some of that money had to be used for the graffiti and repairing that. Tiger did that, his vendors, by flipping the boards and also cleaning up the patio up top that had spray paint. So one of the things as commission members is we should be going through Bristow and kind of looking if there's any issues. Certain things, I believe, we can ask Tiger, the town will take care of. If, you know, there is a tree that's suddenly a hazard maybe, and we identify. We also have New Canaan Land Trust as an agreement with the town regarding Bristow. It's going to be a stewardship agreement. It is a stewardship agreement, sorry, which was signed in October 2023, and they will be doing the same thing. So with the completion of the Cam Hutchins Garden, one of the things that reached out to Land Trust, they've been helping plant some of the plants. They've been doing some watering. So we need to, like, one of the issues going on with Bristow right now is it definitely needs, some of these new plantings need to be watered. And we need to check with Tiger if the town is still coming through and watering, particularly the oak tree that was planted by Pollinator Pathway. The Exchange Club planted some, oh my gosh, I'm forgetting the name of the trees. Dogwood trees by the front along Old Sanford Road, and those need to be watered. We do have someone in there today. She took it upon herself to water because she had the equipment, but we need to know how we can water, what, what we're allowed to do. So yeah, so taking walks monthly at least in, in Bristow and just taking notes and what needs to be done, especially if there's anything that needs any repair. So one of the things we need to talk about is what do we do with that $10,000 budget? You know, if we don't use it by the end of the budget cycle, it goes back into the general fund, so.
Okay. Maybe we, maybe we schedule regular walkthroughs and start a document, like a to-do list with maintenance and
Yeah.
plans for trees to add.
Yeah, so what we can do is for, just bring a list into the meeting and then we can go over what we think needs to be done. $10,000 is going to get eaten up really quick.
Okay.
But yeah, so anything that, if they're particularly big things. So like before the Centennial, there, due to flood in August, there was like a huge tree down the river that was up against, near the pavilion, up against the bridge. So, you know, alerted the town and, and stuff like that. They'll take care of, I believe. It won't come out of our budget.
Okay.
But yeah, any new plantings? We do need to be careful if there's any graffiti or anything like that.
To keep some, uh, money in the bucket.
Have something ready to spend before July.
Remind me, the budget cycle, it's June 30?
Yeah, and we have until June 30th, and then the new is July 1st for the town. So that's it. On the park looks great. Big thank you to Chris Shipper and Tiger Man and the whole DPW and the vendors.
Yes, big thank you to Chris Shipper, Tiger Man.
And then Land Trust, the cake at that Centennial was so good. Okay, so next on the agenda, the Plan of Conservation and Development. So pages 65 through 74 of the P O C D, embrace sustainability and resiliency. I've, I've had, we've, we've reached out to people to, the public comment ends tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, the 20th. And just wondering if anybody has anything, I think commission members have written to Sarah Casey. Any, anything you, in this, if you. Yeah, any questions?
I'm pulling it up.
Thought it was. Obviously, the P O C D is just a guideline.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's a guideline. It's not a.
I mean, there's wording that can always be stronger in there about, you know, we want to see this, or we'll touch it. Probably too strong a word, but.
But this is great because last, the last P O C D, of course, the P O C, the Plan of Conservation and Development, so it's done every 10 years, didn't have a whole section just to sustainability. So kudos to that. I know the library had a group of all of organizations, including Garden Club, Deification League, Land Trust, Nature Center, Plant New Canaan, and other groups working together. Conservation Commission on promoting, getting people interested in the P O C D. The workshops, promoting the workshops, getting the word out. So that could be in there. So I mean, let's go to me once again. It's actions. It's always just a guideline.
Sorry, I do have one question. In the sustainability section, is there, did you see any, any strategies related to making the town more pedestrian and bike friendly? As in, you know, bike lanes and.
So that wasn't in.
More than a different section.
That, that was in a different section. There was, there was something about that in sidewalks. So I didn't print that out specifically. That was mentioned, and if people are interested, the more of that, they can definitely reach out to. Let me get Sarah's.
Yeah, I know there was a lot of interest in that during the Jeff Speck visit. And a lot of excitement around the idea of slowing down traffic, making the streets more in line with the complete street design, you know, designs that are out, being implemented in other towns, adding bike lanes. And adding pedestrian walkways that are safe.
So that did get a reasonable amount of attention, but I can't remember what section that's in.
Yeah, it might be something for us to review and make sure is, that the language represents the community's, you know, what the community voiced, some of those Jeff Speck meetings.
So, I mean, the public comment goes until tomorrow. So, I mean, if there's anything else you want in there, definitely reach out. I know I've, I've sent an email with some of the things that I saw.
I could as well, or reach out to Sarah.
Yeah.
Curious what, what you both felt was missing.
My, my points were more in terms of emphasis.
Okay.
Like, there, there are things that were, I can't recall off the top of my head, but there were things that were sought, you know, should address. Well, should, you know, urgently address, or, you know.
Yes, I see.
Something along those lines, as opposed to anything incrementally, you know, something, some new topic that had been overlooked, but.
And what about you, Robin?
Some of them were, I mean, for me, some of them were just mistakes. There was something about open space. There was something like nine acres of open space for every person in town, or that was, there was a decimal point. Somewhere, actually, let me see what I sent to Sarah.
So we, you and I have sent that as individuals. I mean, do we, as a commission, want to.
What we did is we.
Endorse this part of it, or would that make a?
I mean, I think as the Conservation Commission, yeah, I mean, we endorse it. We, we, that's one of the reasons we're doing the special meeting before tomorrow. I mean, could it be stronger? Sure, but I think it's great that it's in there. And I also think that it's.
I had forgotten that it wasn't in the previous one.
Yeah, so the previous one did have, you know, the town did have information about solar panels, which the town did, you know, they went back to the P O C D and they did, you know, put solar panels on Town Hall, on the Highway Department, the Nature Center, and at, at the pool. And at the schools. I think one of the schools, I think South School did it on their own.
Okay.
And then the town did the others. So it was, because they did a power purchase agreement, but that was a while ago. Regardless.
But I, I like the idea of the Conservation Commission sending like a group email to, to Sarah as sort of like a, you think that's different than us individually as citizens sending feedback?
Yeah, I mean, so, so I met with Sarah as chair a few months ago, more, more than a few months ago, to go over everything. They've been taking input through all these workshops they've had. So, I mean, it's, today's the 19th, so there's not much. I mean, so I'm just looking up some of the things, you know, page 27, I wrote according to the open space, 15.7%, 2,227 acres of New Canaan is protected, dedicated or unsecured open space, which amounts to approximately nine acres of open space per capita. That's not correct.
Right.
But that was, and she did say that they were going, mentioned the Pollinator Pathway Resolution should be mentioned in page 39, page 48. Yeah, so here it is in page 48. I just said there's a typo in, and this is not in this, so it must be page 48. Continue to reinforce the built natural aesthetics that contribute to New Canaan small town feel such as its downtown walkability. So it does talk about, so it's page 48, walkability, street trees, preservation of historic and architectural resources. So, and then page 52, which is not under sustainability, develop, let's see, it says, develop a pedestrian guide and/or app with mapping that illustrates walking routes, municipal parking and signage directing. Oh, that's right. I said, is this something the Conservation Commission should take on? Who decides this? And it was P N Z. So yeah, so under 52, it does talk about pedestrian walkability. So that is in there. I just didn't highlight it because it wasn't sustainability for the conservation.
What page?
So my comments were on page 48 and page 52. So if you look at page 48. Yeah, so it's under community theme.
Just curious whether bike lane, the priority of, you know, making it safe for kids on bikes, cyclists, people on wheels made it in here.
Yeah, so strategy 1.3, 1.3.3, support efforts to promote walkability within the downtown area. Provide a convenient, attractive and safe network of sidewalks, crosswalks and other pedestrian connections. Prohibit or discourage off-street parking in front of yard setbacks to maintain an active streetscape. And then they have the actions. Downtown parking. Yeah, so I don't know if bike lanes got in there. I mean, I read this before, a couple of months ago. Now I can't remember what I read, but. Yeah, so I did go through the whole thing and, and sent my, my feedback to Sarah.
Does, is that reflected in this version?
No.
No, this is the draft. So they're going to go, once they take all the feedback, they're going to, the consultants will decide if there's been enough for this or for that. But yeah, so I would say today's last day, you know, get any feedback to Sarah. And just for, if anyone's listening, Sarah's, Sarah Carey's email is, if I can get this up. Sarah.
Sarah dot Carey.
Yeah.
New Canaan, and New Canaan CT, Donna.
Yeah. Yeah.
It would be helpful for us to do a post about that somewhere, New Canaan Moms, or today's the last day to get your feedback in on the P O C D.
Yeah, as, as an individual, you could not as the Conservation Commission. As an individual, you could. Yeah, I mean, Plant New Canaan's been posting about it. It's been in the Deification League newsletter, the, I believe, the Garden Club newsletter. I think, and Land Trust definitely sent something out for sure. So that's gone out. Yeah, so that's, so that's it. So.
My only thinking on the, in terms, I, I can't imagine, I would hope there would be nothing like toned down in the final version. Right? With regard to this resiliency and sustainability, like, you know, because I think the next iteration is going to be essentially fine.
Yeah.
Right? So, so it's, you know, this is not like we're commenting on the final draft, but I'm, I'm hoping and I sense and believe that this is not getting toned down. The people aren't doing anything. Their comments interest, do enhance, you know, these type of measures.
Yeah.
But that, but that is always a concern when the final, you know, document gets put in front of you and it's not.
Really, yeah.
Right, because they're taking feedback from all the stakeholders.
Yeah.
And developers and others.
So, but no, I, I think we're, I think there was just, I think at this point, there, it's from the feedback, and I'm sure they're, I don't know if they're getting much feedback, but it's, you know, there, I know Town Council had some open, had some special meetings on the public hearing on this, but.
I think as an individual, I'll make another comment or two, you know, it's even fine spots too.
Yeah, and that's the email that I sent out previously, like, you know, make a, you know, make a comment. You know, look at, look it over, make a comment, reach out to Sarah. And the consultants, of course, work on this, so it depends on what they've heard enough voices say, whether it be at the workshops that were held at Lapham. Some of them were held here at Town Hall, you know, what's saying what, so go from there. So I would say for our next meeting, one of the things we'll be discussing is, we'll have Tiger here, so we can talk more about the, the budget and going forward at Bristow Bird Sanctuary. Another thing we really want to get on top of right now are the, the tree planting. Tiger said that the state has relented on the size of the, the diameter of the trees on state roads. So they've reached out to New Canaan Deification League. There are 200,000, I believe it's $200,000 of, these half was going to be for roads and streets, the others was going to be for parks. So I'd be interested. I've reached out to Waving Conservancy because they're working with Tiger as well and just seeing, so bringing Tiger in here and just finding how much money is there for trees? Where can these trees for, as you said, John, parks can go? Because maybe they could go to schools if they were needed, but from there, we can, because once. But from there, we can, because once this, if we pass the deadline of the ARPA funds being able to be used for this, they, the town has to use them for something and, or else it would go back to the federal government. So the town, what they'll do is they'll wrap that into the general fund because they can, because the town lost money on parking. We're still, I think, I believe, we're still within the amount that they, they can recoup the cost. You can't just put it in your general fund, ARPA funds, but you can recoup money that was lost. And, and definitely, they're still down on parking during the pandemic.
And I want to make sure it's spent on trees, as it was intended. And that, and, and there are municipal parking lots, which, you know, there are schools, there are parking lots that can use, that can use trees. There are town-owned properties that, that, that we can easily dictate, or Tiger can dictate what, what, what happens there.
Yeah, because P and Z regulations state that parking lots are supposed to have trees, islands with trees.
And Lucas Parking Lot has nice islands that are, that are waiting and ready to go for trees. I mean, it really, and they just paved that lot too, so I would really love.
So did it just finally get paved?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would really spruce that up if we put six trees in there.
Yeah.
So.
So, and, and that is, I, I believe certain parking lots were grandfathered in. I don't believe that's one that's grandfathered in. They already have the islands, so trees are supposed to be planted in there.
What do you mean, it's not grandfathered in?
So there is a P and Z, I've now got to find it, though. I might, probably won't be able to find it till the next. That, that you're, you're supposed to have trees in parking lots.
Well, that has, it has two islands, and it has.
Right.
You know, and that lot by the, by the library, in fact, can use a couple more trees too. It's better, it's in better shape, but there was a beautiful one that came down over by where those auto body shops are.
Oh, right.
And they could use a replacement one, and there's plenty of places around town for us to put, you know.
So you're willing to reach out to Tiger prior to our meeting? Okay, great. Okay, any other questions?
The only other point to bring up is that the two Conservation Commissioners who aren't here have sent emails to the group with their thoughts on the P O C D draft. I don't know if.
So, and they were directed to, to make those to, to write that to Sarah, because we can't discuss that
Okay.
via email. Yeah, as, as a commission member, as a commission, we can't, for FOIA reasons, we can't discuss things. So that's why I said, you know, please send your thoughts to Sarah, but we can't have those sort of communications online away from the public.
I was hoping they would be here to, you know, so we could.
Yeah.
Public meeting, but if they, if, if you directed them to give feedback as citizens, I, I suppose that.
Yeah, so yeah, so that works.
Okay.
All right, so I would say it is adjourned at 1:36.
Great.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you.